All right, I'd like to call to order tonight's Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission Regular Meeting dating Thursday, October 10th, 2024. If we could begin by standing and paying respects to the flag.
I present the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you. If we could note tonight's roll?
Noted. There is a quorum. Mr. Ballard and Mr. Spiz are excused.
Okay, moving on to number four. Approval of tonight's agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve tonight's agenda dated Thursday, October 10th, 2024.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Number five, any conflict of interest, expert contact? Being done. We will move on to number six, approval of the minutes for Planning Commission Regular Meeting, 9/26/2024.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. We approve the minutes of the Planning Commission's Regular Meeting on 9/26/2024.
Support.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Number seven, this is the time when we take public comment on items not scheduled for public hearing or on tonight's agenda. If anybody has something, again, that is not on tonight's agenda, you'll be given three minutes. Each person will be allowed to speak once. Three minutes, and what I would ask for sake of time is if what you want to get up and talk about, the person in front of you already talked about, please respect that time for somebody who wants to bring up stuff that's already or not already been spoken. Okay? With that, come to the podium, state your name, and I will start three minutes.
Wilbert Hutchings, 3385 Delano, Oxford. Last time I was here, it was confusing to me. I'm here to, for the master plan, which is on the agenda.
Correct.
But last time I was told that I couldn't speak after you've had reviewed whatever issues you're going to deal with in this evening. Is that how this is going to operate?
Whatever you want to speak about, now is the time to bring that up?
But I'm confused, because I would like to hear what you're going to be saying about the gravel pit and the master plan, and then have some intervention, some discussion from me if I have any questions about what you've discussed. I can't do that, right?
Normally, if it's not a public hearing, no. I'm assuming with the group that there are several of you that would like to speak about that?
But again, it's on the agenda, it's a public hearing, and I don't understand.
It's not a public hearing.
This isn't a public hearing?
This is not a public hearing tonight. This is just an update on the master plan. Normally, we don't do this, but if you would like, when we get to that section, if we can keep it civil, I will do a three-minute during that time after the master plan update is done.
Yeah, I don't see any reason why I wouldn't be civil. You know, I'm here because, number one, I don't have internet, and I don't have the access to the public meetings, so I'm kind of in a blank on the whole issue. So yeah, that'd be fine with me after you're done. Maybe a couple minutes if I have a question.
Okay.
Sure.
Hi, my name's Dave Wagner. I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm one of the trustee candidates, and I just wanted to meet you guys, and then maybe we'll have a chance to work in the, work together in the future.
Thank you.
Chairman, I have a point of order as well. Ken Gross appearing on behalf of Oxford Hills. I have a comment that I want to make relative to Oxford Hills, which obviously bears on the master plan, but the agenda tonight relative to the master plan doesn't have anything related to Oxford Hills on it. So I wanted to inquire as to whether the time to make that three-minute statement would be now, or whether you would prefer me to do it during the master plan, or option C, I suppose, is not at all, which I would hope is the case.
If you would rather wait until the master plan update is done and do that, that'd be fine.
Does the panel have a preference either way?
No.
I don't believe so.
No, I can just go ahead, because I'm going to be especially brief, particularly in fact, the fact that there's space for anyone, so I'm sure that you guys don't want to see them even joining long. But what I wanted to address was on, at the meeting on September 12th, when the Oxford Hills plan was presented as a small area plan, the ultimate outcome of that meeting was a presentation, was a decision made, presented to the commissioners to make a decision, do we want to either adopt a sub-area plan for Oxford Hills, or do we want to just leave it at its current initial designation of two and a half acres per unit? And I feel as though that was an error to leave those as the only two options, and I want to appeal to the commissioners to put on the agenda for a different night a reconsideration of that. And I want to just make a couple points relative to it. The stated goals as to the residential land use that have been adopted thus far in the master plan, that date back to the meeting on 3/28/24, and that it was again presented in the materials on May 9th, and on June 13th, and on July 11th, is always the same language, which is the density type and character of residential development of Oxford should meet the needs of the township residents by allowing dense traditional neighborhood areas near the village, with larger lot developments decreasing in density further from the village borders. Well, the Oxford Hills course borders the village on the south border, so in our view, it is very appropriate for a future land use designation to take into account that goal, and at least provide for high-density use close to the border, and then, as we had presented before, it projecting out to less density as it goes south and by the lake. And at the minute, at the hearing on July 11th, basically, the planners presented the concept of three small area plans being adopted. One was for the golf course, the other, I think, has now been framed as the Ray Road Subarea Plan, and the Dunlap Subarea Plan. And I just want to point out that prior to, that at the meeting on 8/22, the sub-area plans were investigated and discussed with regard to Ray Road and Dunlap, and they both became sub-area designations where we've got the Xs that create flexibility to the commission when they're presented with a plan. And Ray Road is not adjacent to the village. It's, like the golf course, it's initially rural residential for two and a half acres per unit, and part of that property is also sub-rural for one acre per unit. We're talking about a potential of 1,500 units with single-family and detached. Dunlap Subarea is not adjacent to the village. That's initially rural residential, two and a half acres. We're talking 600 units and single-family and attached. Then when we come to the golf course, instead of looking at the flexibility that has been afforded to the Ray Road Plan and the Dunlap, right now, we've picked Door B, which is two and a half acres per unit, rejecting Door A, which was the sub-area plan that allowed flexibility, and not even considering whether there was possibly Door C, D, and E, which could have been some combination of the two. And I want to appeal to the commissioners that I think that, number one, is, Mr. Wozniak abstained at that vote, because he pointed out that this idea of voting and picking between the two options wasn't in the agenda and wasn't really contemplated, and I feel as though it was the wrong choice. I realize you've got a full agenda tonight, but what I'd ask you to consider is give this some thought, and perhaps what we're requesting on behalf of Oxford Hills is to put it on the agenda again and give it another reconsideration and look, and direct the planners to present the sub-area plan in a manner consistent with how they approached Ray Road and the Dunlap, and Dunlap. Because when we presented it to you, it was in a fixed format with carving up the property with certain designated areas, which I understood the reluctance. But then the planner suggested, well, maybe go to the sub-area plan, and then all of a sudden, boom, boom, we said, all right, let's pick between sub-area plan and two and a half acres per unit. I think that was a little bit in haste. I understand how it developed, but I think it imposes a very unfair result to Oxford Hills in compared to the way you're treating the other properties. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to speak on topics not on tonight's agenda, or I'm assuming everybody wants to talk after the? After the presentation?
Corey, I think, because we'll move on to master plan here in a minute.
Okay.
To which I would assume these folks are here to talk about.
Sure.
So it may be appropriate that when we get to that point, you conduct the meeting accordingly as to how you want to with public comment, hear what they have to say, so that when I get to my presentation, you have their thoughts, you have what we've put forward, and you kind of have everything on the table to go in the direction which we'll go tonight. That's my thoughts.
To his point, it, it makes more sense, because what they bring up, he will, he will be able to address. To do it the opposite way.
Sure.
Because there's no room for back and forth.
Okay. We can, we can do that. So we'll put a time for comments just before your presentation. Okay?
But, but my point was, I need to know what he's doing in order for me to understand what it is, because I'm going into this thing pretty cold.
This isn't supposed to be a dialogue back and forth. It's supposed to be just an update from him. So for us to open it up and allow for the discussion, it's either before or not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to give a real two-second bird's-eye view with what we're charged with tonight, and then sit down.
Mr. Chair, we need to get point of order. We need to get back to our agenda and address this as we come forward.
Okay. Okay, so moving on to number eight, commissioners' comments. Do you have anything, Mr. Hall?
No, sir, thank you. I have none.
Nothing?
Nothing, Chair.
Nothing?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, number nine, public hearing, which we do not have for tonight. Number 10, unfinished business, master plan update. If you want to do a quick two-minute, just quick bird's-eye view, then we'll take a second.
Okay.
Do the discussion.
All right. My apologies, I'll be working from the East Dais. Is that what this is called? The East Dais tonight, per some technical issues up at the podium. So for this evening, as it relates to the master plan, the things that we'll be looking at is, we've been working on the sub-area sites for the Ray Road and the Dunlap Road sub-areas. As, you know, as we had kind of discussed, we presented, I believe, a few meetings ago, kind of a very rough overview of those sites and different amenities and/or styles of housing that could go in those areas. And so tonight, we've made some of the adjustments from the comments made at that meeting, given a little bit of an explanation in the package as to what those adjustments meant. And then tonight, are asking you to take a look and see if there are any other further changes that you would request from those sub-area plans. So sub-area plans are not literal. They are concepts, they are general, and they are that on purpose, because the overall intent of these is to get some general idea of the type of uses that would go into the space, the type of amenities that would go into the space, so that if and when a site plan comes forward in the future, we're not starting from, we're not starting from the ground, we're not starting from step one. We get ourselves a little bit ahead, because an expectation's already been laid as to what the community is looking for out of these developments. So they're not, they're not zoning, they're not hard and fast numbers and calculations and requirements. They are a bird's-eye view for these sites. The other part that I would add more so, as we talk about the Ray Road site, is that that site is still an active mine, and that over the next five to 20 years, the geography associated with that site could change. So what we're looking at, again, there's, there's a lake shown there, there's some housing here, there's some commercial there. These things can change with time, but it will not change what we've outlined in the sub-area plan for regardless of what goes where, what we are expecting out of it. So again, it's just, it's a very bird's-eye view, a general visualization of what could go there, and more importantly, list the types of amenities and the types of uses, as opposed to the hard and fast here, this way, you know, set in stone. So with that, I can take a step back.
Chair, would you entertain a motion to put the, the map up on the screens?
I think we can just break up the, the middle portion?
No, I'm, I'm sorry, it was just a figure of speech.
Sure.
Mateo, please put the map up.
I was so confused.
So I can, as the conver, as needed, I can scroll back and forth between the two. This is the Ray Road site, which is basically northeast of Ray Road and M24.
Mr. Chairman, I have some questions. Is this my time to talk?
What we should probably do is open it up and let the public discuss some concerns and questions, and then we'll let Mateo finish, and then I can do questions.
Okay.
Will that work?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. So, kind of breaking from tradition, we will open this up for community dialogue. Again, if you would like to come up, state your name. I'll start a timer for three minutes, and whatever you would like to discuss.
Wilbert Hutchings. I don't know how many of you had a chance to go out and take a look at the northeast area where I live on Delano Road. Just as a point, my primary concern is for that whole northeast quadrant that's thankfully retained its 20-acre minimums. I'd really like you to go out there and just kind of take a look and see what, like, the open space is. It's quite heavily used with horses. And I have 11 neighbors in about a mile and a quarter, and they represent about 350 acres. You know, people own a lot of land, people like a lot of land, and the activities out there entail a lot of land. We're looking at this gravel pit, and, you know, unfortunately, we're also looking at what happened at Waterstone and the density that that entails. And when I saw the number, I don't know how many acres that parcel is that we're talking about, but I, I saw a number of 1,500 units, which I assume as a unit is a place where a person lives. And if we take a look at a unit, usually, a unit has two and a half cars. That's like 4,000 cars. So, I mean, this could have a dramatic impact on us in the northeast section, which we haven't had before. The mines have been there, but the mines haven't had the density that a water stone represents. Primarily, because I don't want to go over my three minutes and bore everybody, I don't like the road coming into the northeast. I think we, we, the less traffic we have into an agricultural area, the better off we are. So when I saw that road in the, in the Ray Road thing, I, I don't think a road coming into our area, especially if there's going to be water stone-type development there eventually, you know? And, and again, I'd like to remind you, I've been involved in these master plans, and it's a brush stroke. It shouldn't be too specific. It should sort of be generally where you'd like to go. And where I'd like you to go is not high-density, but as low a density as you can to impact our area the least that you can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Margaret Culver, 3385 Delano Road. First of all, I want to compliment you all on trying to preserve our area, which is the northeast quadrant. You know, I know it's an ongoing battle, and I know that Oxford Township has been, in the past, very good at trying to preserve the rural quality of our area. And in fact, in a lot of your literature, you know, you promote that Oxford Township provides for the rural country life. I moved out of Birmingham, I moved out of Bloomfield Hills here for that reason. I live on a 40-acre farm. I'm a horse person, I'm a horse artist, and I want to try and preserve our area. I think in concept and in intent, that that's how we should look at this master plan. The horses that are here are what keeps the values up in our area. We have places in our area that are sold for multi-million dollars. We just had a place a couple years ago, I think, that sold for $14 million. We have a lot of money. Those people are not moving in because we have a subdivision near us. They're moving in because it's horse country, it's rural-friendly, they don't want to live in Bloomfield, they don't want to live in Troy. This is an invasion into our area, because it's going to impact all of the rural residents around it. And it's going to have a population that is much greater than the rural residents around them. So we start losing our power politically and, and physically in that, in the area. I would like to ask you to take a look at that, to at least not have a road coming out on North Oxford Road, which is right into our rural area. Would also ask that the burms be kept up, so that there's some kind of buffer between the road and the development. And I would like you to think of maybe adding parkland on the North Oxford side. I, I think it's not our duty to look to how can we best give whoever owns that land profit on the land. I think we need to look at the concept of how can we best provide for the community the use of that land. And I think parkland space, limiting access space, very low-density development, all of those things I would ask you to consider. And I think it follows with what the township says it stands for, which is rural country life. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Borrett. I'm at 205 Tuckbridge Court in Oxford. We're one of the few residents, a small lake there called Whistler Lake, which is on the Dunlap area. And our concern is with the fact that our lake is pretty small, pretty fragile. It's a part of an old gravel pit that's supposed to love Oxford, is. Water quality is pretty good, but it's been pretty good because we have a very limited number of houses on the lake. This, we're well aware that the northwest corner of our lake is a large tract of vacant ground, and what our concern is, the possibility of funneling onto the lake by more than three or four home sites. Somebody breaks the property up and reserves a park or a beach area or something, that's still going to allow a lot more traffic onto the lake. That's, that's going to be problematic for both preservation of the water quality and for the use of the few people who are on the Lake McNell. The other concern we have is that there's a stream that runs through this whole area and crosses underneath Seymour Lake Road that serves Tam Lake and the other lakes on the other side. It does, actually doesn't touch our lake. We, our water is provided mostly from springs, and we're actually feeding into that stream just before it crosses over the road. But that stream is, and that whole area, that large tract of ground, water table in there is very high. And our concern is just a runoff. You start changing the topography of that property, and start adding yards and streets and all the fertilizer and everything else that goes into it. It's a pretty fragile area that we think needs to be considered as keeping it as low-density as you can. You know, I've been around for a long time, just retired last year after 50 years as a real estate attorney. So I've seen these, what I call covering book exercises periodically. One of the questions I have is, what was it that was part of the old plan that was forecast by the planners that has changed? Why is that old plan suddenly faulty or no longer valuable? Because we go through these processes seemingly every few years, but I always question, what's changed from the forecasts that were made by the planner that led to the plan that's already existed? Why are we changing it? And I think in this case, I don't know if there's been much change, except that there's already been a lot of growth that has occurred. Are we, is that something that was not anticipated? I don't, I don't, I guess I don't see what has changed here in Oxford that should require a whole new master plan. But primarily, we're concerned about our lake being fragile and the water table is there, because they're all on wells. We don't have access to a water main. So we're, we're dependent on the water quality where we are, and we want to preserve that. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Megan Spencer, 2850 Valentine Road. I understand that we're, we're going to have change. We're going to build homes. My concern is for the kids and safety. Right now, off of Ray Road, we have track and field. They run. It makes me nervous every single time I see children running. I put a message out to my neighbors, hey, there's runners on Ray. Slow down. You know, we have horses on Ray Road, on Hosner, on Delano, and, you know, our schools, not to mention even Park and Rec. I brought my kids from soccer today, and Dan Sullivan said that we have so many enrolees in our sports as a community. You know, the pickleball that we just did, those are filled. How are we going to support this many more residences? I just, I don't see how it's possible. With the traffic on 24 Ray Road, our back roads, it makes me nervous. So I would definitely want to see how we're planning for that. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Ashley Van Estey, 1621 Ray Road. That's going on literally right next door to me. I'm against it. Like Mike said, we have runners, we have horses. Our schools are already overloaded. Our resources are already overloaded. So I would like to see some kind of plan for our schools before any of this happens. Same thing with, you know, just the resources that we have in general over Oxford. So that's just my concerns.
My name is John Urema. We're at 3401 Jonathan Road, which is in Oxford, very northeast corner of Oxford. We moved out here 15 years ago for the horse community. We have 50 acres. Our kids went to Kingsbury School, and then later went, now they're all graduate, they're all past college, but we used to drive them from our house down to Cranbrook. I can't imagine, unless I got a helicopter's license, how you would get them from there to Cranbrook. how you would get them from there to Cranbrook with this coming. I don't know what's going to happen to the roads. I understand why people would want to live out here, it's unbelievable. I just feel like this is going to change it so dramatically that it'll never be anything like what, the reason they want to come out here. I don't know. Does this triple the size of the community? Does it, I just, I love it out here. I don't, this is the first time where I thought, maybe we're going to be here when we retire. I, this is, for me, this is heartbreaking. So I appreciate your time. And sorry if I reiterated some of the other comments, but I don't know what they do to the roads or our road or... So all these roads get paved around here. Is there a plan for 24? Is there going to be, it takes me an hour, we work in the city. It takes me an hour and a half. I don't even know what it would take. I don't even know how you would get from this community to work in Birmingham, to work anywhere. This, this seems, it just seems ill-planned and not really thought out, except somebody can make a lot of money because they're next to an area that's beautiful, because it is so serene and beautiful pieces of property. This is, this is going to ruin what we moved out here for. So I don't know if there's anything we can do. You can't change by City Hall, but this is, this is going to dramatically change everything out here. This area is so special, this hunt is so special, it doesn't exist anywhere else. And these things just are, just a cancer that just take away the beautiful areas that we live in. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Can I just add something real quick? Is there a way to make it so that the horse farms and other large parcels exceeding like a hundred acres can't repeat this?
Can you come up to the mic so they can?
Is there a way to make this site different zone-wise in the future so that your hundred-acre parcels that are larger than a hundred acres cannot have the same new zoning in future splits for residential? Like, that would be amazing, right? Like, apparently, like, obviously, this, they're going to be done mining, right? So in the future, they're allowed to do this. And like he said, five to twenty years, cool. Let's make the roads right, try to work on our schools, work on all of that. But for the future larger parcels nearby for years 25, 35, 45, how can we make it so that not every hundred-acre parcel will eventually look like that? Is there a way that we can limit it to just the mining areas? Is that something that we could look into? Is that possible?
I don't know how we would do that, but that is something, obviously, we'd take a look at.
Okay, thank you. I promise I'm done now.
Hi, my name is Sandy Bocley, and I'd like to see the other, the other map, if you would. I live at 1411 Oak Ridge Road. In fact, my house is right in the middle of, on the bottom of your map. And your bright green, green space is actually on my property, which I found really interesting. I have fourteen acres and you've, and I called Jim right away and said, is there an eminent domain thing here? Because they've got, they've colored in a corner of stuff that I own. So, but, you know, I understand, it's a sketch and maybe that's not a real issue. But I look at that and I, you know, it certainly caused for concern. I think there, there's a lot of infrastructure issues right now in the lake-oriented Oxford area. And I think, you know, John Urema was talking about how long it takes to get anywhere. And this is just going to exacerbate an already difficult situation. I don't want to repeat what other people have said, but there are, with wells in the Oxford area, there are arsenic problems. There, there are ongoing issues with water quality as we've drilled. We've just had to remediate our own well and put in an arsenic system. And so there's things, things going on that have to be addressed. And as we change the topography here, I don't know how that's going to impact the, you know, the water on our lake and also start impacting the water table and well, well water quality and that sort of thing. So I'm concerned. I'm also concerned about the kids. I'm on the board, school board at Kingsbury Country Day School. And I look at what happens in Oxford and just the density of kids we have in the classroom. We're, we're getting, especially in the Oxford Public Schools, well beyond what educators will say is a good ratio, a good learning ratio for children. And we're talking about bringing in a lot more families, which is wonderful. But if we don't have a parallel path for growing infrastructure, growing elementary schools, another middle school, another high school, we're going to create issues. Some people can take their kids to Cranbrook and, you know, I'm able to do that, but not everybody can do that. And we have to be considerate of the tension and the stress we're going to be providing across the community. So I just hope that in addition to just filling in the available space with housing, we've thought about all the other things or that we'll take the time to think about them. And I don't mean to insult you, I'm sure you're thinking about all of these other things as well. But, but I think the community needs to understand that it's a fully integrated approach, not just a way to start building houses as quickly as water stone went up without working on the infrastructure and everything that we need to have in our community. Thank you.
Yeah, my name's Evan Moore. I've been an equine veterinarian in this area since about 1989 and lived in the Oxford area since 2001. I'm on Jonathan Road next to the Uremas. And I just feel like the whole character of our area is going to change and maybe never come back. And places like the covered wagon, everything equine, places up in Metamora are just going to have to find other places to exist. And this area has been an enclave for not only the people that live here to ride their horses, but for people to come out. And there's probably a lot more people that do that, come out and ride their horses that live down in the city and board their horses out here. And with the increase in travel time that's going to occur based on the bottleneck that is downtown Oxford, it's going to have oodles of more traffic and really no good way to get around it. I think back in the sixties, they tried to bypass this whole area and it never went through. And that's why the angle that is M24 north of Oxford is the way it is, because the bypass never threw, went through. The same thing's true of Elmont, where Elmont doesn't have a bypass around it. And it's a bottleneck. And they don't have the kind of development that this would bring. They don't even have a water stone, let alone a second water stone coming up. So to me, if there's a way to downsize this or get them to think in another direction... I mean, I happen to know the owner of American Ag or Levy Corporation and his nephew went to school with me down at Cranbrook. And they've been developers down in Florida for many, many years. And they owned a 4,000-acre tract along I-75 near Benita Springs. And they sold it after fifteen years because they couldn't do the infrastructure developments that were required to make it reasonable to have a development like that. And in that area, it was creating an interchange at I-75. Right now, there's a twelve-mile, I think it's actually a fourteen-mile gap between the two interchanges on I-75 there. And it's still that gap. And that's why that development never happened. So to me, that was responsible thinking about, let's not let all these people come in here. If we're going to have to dump them out to two interchanges that are that far apart, the same thing's going to happen here with M24 getting a lot busier on the four-lane part, but just uncontrollably busier down, in downtown Oxford. And we already have some of the worst accidents in the state that happen in our area in the M24 corridor, starting from down around Drainer all the way up towards Metamora. And it's because people want to get places quickly and there's too many people trying to do it at the same time. So, you know, this, this same property owner has tried, I believe, for fifteen to twenty years to have a brand-new gravel pit up in Boy Scout Camp in Metamora. And he, he doesn't have it yet because the township and the people of the township have fought and fought and fought and been able to hold it off up till this point. This thing has come out of nowhere. I don't believe this is a twenty-year project. If it is, we don't have known about it until recently. And so it seems reasonable that if the residents of the township are not all in favor of it, then we should try to do what we can to minimize its impact or to steer them in a different direction. Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, before you take over, Mateo, I just, I do appreciate everybody coming out and speaking and showing the passion. Please know, you know, no matter which way we go or whatever we decide, we do value this opinion and we do hear you. So thank you.
Okay. All right, so as I kind of stated earlier, the plans that were presented this evening were had been modified based on the last conversation we had about the sites. And really, kind of what we're looking to do tonight is determine if there's any other changes that you'd like to see in those sub-area plans. We can start with the Ray Road site. So you'll notice that we added the maximum dwelling unit to kind of allow for at least a maximum amount that could go on the site, but still allow for design flexibility. The north-south road connecting to North Oxford and Ray Road, kind of creating a T-intersection with the, also the proposed east-west connector, would basically be an extension off of Dunlap all the way to where North Oxford kind of loops back north. Two-and-a-half-acre lots have been designated along the east end of the development, as well as some, you know, some language about buffering and natural space preservation, again, to kind of deescalate the density as we work our way out from the center of the site. And the multifamily designation was expanded in the essence of, you know, we're going to try to reduce count further away of the outer borders. So to kind of allow for that unit count that we were discussing, the multifamily area got bigger, just to kind of, if you take density out of here, we add it here. And all those sites are adjacent to the, the commercial areas that we discussed along Lapeer. So with that, as it relates to the Ray Road site, we're looking to garner any other feedback that the commission may have regarding that sub-area plan.
I have one quick question, I think, for Mateo. When, when you put, or someone put, I don't know, the north-south extension of a road off Ray, that was just because you're trying to divide the properties there? Is that what that was all about?
That was following with Commissioner Lozak's request to maybe see consideration for north-south connection as it relates to the school, having access to the school area to the south there. And because we are talking, I mean, east-west, we are talking about a great distance, trying to kind of cut that up with a north-south connector as well.
Okay. That wasn't present in those earlier conversations.
I'm not trying to put words in your mouth. I mean, is that a fair, that's fair, okay.
Okay, I think when, and to let the public understand too, when I look at this, we're still trying to keep the home country a state-sized ten-acre parcels to the north, right?
Correct.
That's what my intention was. I said, I never wanted to really see that change anyway. I love the area up there, you know, when you get up near the northeast quadrant in Oxford. The rural residential, the two-and-a-half-acre parcels, that'd be adjacent to the Oxford Road facility now, right? That's, and in your mind, I don't know how far that heads towards the west, but it looks like a substantial number of feet. So there would be several two-and-a-half-acre parcel lots that are similar to some lots up there now.
Correct.
On Oxford Road.
And again...
And that creates, to me, a pretty good buffer at that point. The only thing that, and what I was trying to look at when you said multiple family down by the commercial part, nobody wants to take large-acre parcels next to commercial property. And we still have the commercial property on 24 at the corner of Ray Road there, proposed for the future plan. I don't see that really changing too much because you're not going to put rural residential lots there and then to the north of the lake, you're keeping it at two-and-a-half-acre lots.
Yes, and it's...
So that, to me, was kind of substantial in property size. I thought two-and-a-half acres was really a pretty good choice. I know some areas, when the lady spoke earlier about, we have, we may have people that own seventy, eighty, a hundred, plus 200-acre parcels at the northeast quadrant. But most of the zoning out there is still minimum lot size of 20 acres.
Correct.
So acreage slot size and what people own are still going to be maintained by how people manage their own property and how they own it.
And the future land use designations for those areas have not changed.
They have not changed.
Even, even in this sub-area plan where we're looking at 10 acres, that's what it is in the future land use method you have now as 10 acres.
Right.
It just would be a part of a sub-area plan now.
I tried to take notes where people thought we were reinventing a new wheel here, but we're really not reinventing any new wheel at those points. Those are what were existing prior to us coming here or myself coming to the planning commission, I'll say it that way. And then every five years approximately, we try to review the master plan to see if it's going in the direction we wanted to head for what the future would be and how properties are being developed. I don't see any of this property getting developed right away, in my mind, because of the mining operations that are still going to exist and what's presently known, what's under the ground, that they can still take out.
Yeah, the original, kind of the very early concepts that were discussed for this area, the timeframe for this site was, it was vast. It was five to twenty years. But I think the five-to-six-year window was probably more the commercial along with here, with the subsequent years after that, the phasing in of residential elements of the site.
In your mind, what you just said, I understand the commercial part of it, where I think that could happen fairly quickly, you know, next to the commercial activity.
Sure.
What you just said about the previous comment was, you don't think that mining is going to cease right away and then happen to take the property and do any changes to it? Until what timetable?
Again, I, these are generalities, but when we put this together, when we, when we presented it on a kind of a different map, the timeframe was five to twenty years for the site's total development?
Yeah.
With the early stuff being the commercial along Lapeer.
Yeah.
So that is kind of what we would foresee, probably in five years, maybe a little earlier. But that the subsequent years following that is when residential would start to be phased in. A site like this is going to be developed over phases and over multiple years.
I understand, okay.
What, what year did water zones start?
Early nineties.
So it's taken thirty-five years, thirty-four years? Because they're still doing the last phase right now.
Yeah, we're still doing inspect, yeah. State inspections for Westlake houses.
So over a thirty-five-year...
And I guess as a point of reference, that development over the eleven, the eleven different phases that it's gone through is about thirteen, like thirteen, fourteen-hundred units? To frame it.
Okay.
Sure, I've got, I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
I've got to stand up, Mateo, I apologize.
That's fine.
Where does this really come out?
So, so it's meant to align with Dunlap, I believe, where Dunlap...
It's meant to align with Dunlap. We've got two different items here. It's north of this east-west road. This is pretty well fixed. We're going to know what the density is of that because we have 2.5 acres, we have 10 acres, we have 2.5 acres. You're only going to fit so much within that, correct?
Correct.
So that's a known entity against the 1,500 with the max. Then we come down here, we have single-family, we have multifamily, and we have the commercial. I'd like to see the commercial develop like yesterday, but it's not. But the multifamily's going to fit in here and single-family's going to fit in here on the equation of whatever this is minus the 1,500.
Yes, and, and with however the topography ends out when the residential developments start to be proposed.
Multifamily, we work our way back to single. The single-family can have what size of lots?
I mean, they range from, I want to say, two...
Nine thousand square feet all the way up to one acre?
I think it's nine thousand up to a acre, yes.
Which is 43,000.
Thank you.
So with a little bit of work, we could pretty much figure-ish what, what the density is going to be down in here, particularly in this corner here, correct? density is gonna be down in here, particularly in this corner here, correct?
You'd probably throw some numbers at that.
So with that in mind, would we be smart to do those, that math, to look at what's gonna be up here as far as density, to go off the fifteen hundred, come down to this corner, look at that, and then the multifamily, that that's subjective because you can do a lot with that.
I I would say that's...
That's keeping the same...
Yeah.
The same flavor of this, but would help our residents of the township understand what can go in this corner? What what's real life gonna bring? I like the east-west road, and I like the north-south road. I wish we had another one in here down in here, but...
I mean, yeah, I mean, I think that those are numbers we can look at. They would, they would be accompanied by a massive asterix because these sites are developed off of net acreage, and we don't, we just don't know what that is. That being said, those numbers can be calculated.
And and that's very fair.
And we don't know the size of that lake either, because that's constantly changing as well.
All of it will. I mean, this is kind of our best guess with what we have now, but we're...
I I'm on the gravel inspection with uh Chairman Bailey, but this this lake is actually solid in between.
Right.
And they're they're, well, we, our folks don't understand, but this, and they're in the midst of, you know, over the years, they plan to have the larger lake.
Any other comments or something?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
If we looked...
Oh, your turn, Bob. Go ahead.
Okay.
Please.
At our last meeting, when we were together, I asked that there be a buffer between North Oxford Road all the way down to Ray Road, between the farms that are on this side and the residential on this side. Your map here shows partially down to this new road, but I would like to see that go all the way down to this corner, which I believe is the intersection of Ray Road and North Oxford Road. And so if you put this down, all the way down, the two-and-a-half acres, that helps take care of your issue, John, of population, because you've reduced the density in this area. You provided a nice buffer between the bigger farms on the uh east side and the west side. So I'd like to see that move down. Now, these roads, does this one connect with North Oxford Road that goes on down from here?
The intent of it, the way, yes.
Okay.
Now, again, those, just so, those roads are just a mar, it's just a as much a part of the topography, where things end up conversation as everything else is. The intent of those notes is to say, east-west, north-south, we need to integrate this to manage traffic.
Okay. I don't have any problem with that. But then, by the same token, because this is school property here, there are residential residents along here, you could actually have a strip along here of one acre or bigger homes.
So, so...
As a buffer.
Two-and-a-half and the buffer down to Ray.
Right.
And then from essentially what is still Oxford Road over to that intersection.
Right.
You're talking about maybe one acre with a buffer?
Right.
Okay.
The whole idea is to, while you're gonna, while this is gonna get developed, is to keep the north Oxford, northeast Oxford residents buffered from that.
Okay.
Any way we can do that.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Would that buffer run east-west as well?
East-west along Ray.
It it does not today, John, but that's what I'm suggesting. If you put it along here, that again would reduce that fifteen hundred number.
So you'd have buffer, one acre pieces of property, and then drop down to, what would you suggest is...
No, this would be buffer, one acre along here, and then two-and-a-half acres would come down to meet it.
And then the center would be open for how large a lot? Would you go all the way down to nine thousand?
You could. I think part of that would be however you could design that to work.
But Commissioner, I'm sorry.
Mateo? With what we have on the screen here today, how do we try to incorporate what Commissioner Turner was saying?
Well, you can, I mean, again, because it's a, it's a very broad-stroke plan, I mean, we can, it can go on there from the perspective of, again, we are highlighting that as we get further out to the borders of this development, we want a lower density and we want buffers. You know, whether or not those buffers end up being two-and-a-half acre or two acres or one acre or one and a half, you know, so on and so forth. They're there for the conversation. What I guess, I'm I'm looking for a little bit of clarity on on the point that you were trying to make, is that this area has, you know, we've established a maximum of fifteen hundred units going into the site.
Correct.
And so that number, as we play with these designations, it's 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 difficult at this time to say whether or not those designations then can still accommodate that number. We're not really at that hard of math yet. That's a site, that's a site plan thing. Um but as you, but yes, as you continue to go uh lower density, lower density, lower density, then how we get to the potential of those fifteen hundred units, you know, we have to, we have to make that consideration as well.
But the wild card is, if they come with a PUD, how does that fit into our discussion of three minutes ago, plan unit development?
I think it's, I mean, I think it's, it harkens back to the comment I made earlier, that whatever this ends up being in the master plan, of an adopted, accepted master plan, when that site plan of PUD comes in, we go to this page and we see, okay, are are they, are they addressing the items that were called for in this area, you know, and how are they addressing them?
We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to have some mathematics involved because you put your, the buffer down here, you put the buffer across here, one acre, two-and-a-half, what are you gonna do with this multifamily then?
I mean, if if they come with, they would they come with a project that has a larger area than what we've outlined here as multiple family, it's not, it doesn't, it doesn't take that off the table.
Again, area, in in my mind, area multifamily don't mean anything, 'cause you just go up another story. We've got a three-story complex right now, apartments in the building, started, a new one.
Yeah.
So how do you address that?
Mr. Chair, Mateo, can I just make a couple of comments?
Yeah.
Based on your conversation and Mr. Turner's and Mr. Noel. Um I'm never really concerned about numbers at this point in time. But I am concerned what Mr. Turner brought up was buffering. I've always thought the northeast quadrant was a beautiful place of Oxford. And I think it should stay that way, and it should stay in that shape. And I've always said, when you go north of Ray Road, when you go into that quadrant, I think it is important, what Mr. Turner brought up, is if we could create some buffering to continue itself in a southerly direction down to Ray Road, and then through that one quadrant, and I know where you're going to, 'cause that's the stop sign, which is a three-way stop sign right now at the high school, where you're proposing that north-south extension into this property. And then if that had buffering along there with one acre parcels on the Ray Road, it would be a nice buffering for those people that still have the residential value of their larger parcels in that northeast quadrant. I think it gives them a a way to, we didn't change, we didn't change any of these parcels on this map right now from what was in the future land use map from the previous plan. Except for the very lower, the the very southern section, 'cause we knew we had the commercial out front. And we knew we had to put something multiple next to it, 'cause you just don't put in...
Right. But on your current draft, this is now outlined as a sub-area plan.
A sub-area?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So I mean, I'm I'm really kind of, I like what Mr. Turner proposed, and I know what John's talking about with numbers, 'cause then it regulates numbers. Numbers tonight aren't as valuable to me as buffering. So I think the buffering was a good comment. I think I could go along with some of that if we could make those changes and bring that back. Because I want these people to understand we're trying to protect them too.
Okay. So I mean, I guess I I would take, and and again, we'll continue to discuss, but one of the adjustments is...
Now, I can't control the traffic on M twenty-four. I mean, that's just what it is.
If if any of us could, we'd be on our yacht now.
I try to avoid it myself certain times of the day, but I just, you know, that's sixty-six thousand vehicles going up and down that road every day.
But it seems as though that the the modification to make to this is, in our yellow, single-family attached-detached at the perimeters, coming off of the density a little bit in that designation to like a one-acre designation with the included buffers along North Oxford and where North Oxford turns, that that's a consensus change. Is that a correct statement?
Well, I'd like it to change, and I think Mr. Turner brought it up. He'd like it to change.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And if Mr. Noel would like it to change, and someone else would be to have a consensus.
Yeah, and the one concern that I have, and I know it, it looks good, I'm actually concerned about extending that road.
Yes.
Because if you're putting a lot of houses in there, you're dumping a lot of people right into where the high school is, and they're gonna use that as a cut-through. If anything, I think that's gonna...
You mean in the future?
In the future, I I think you're gonna have even more issues with people cutting through there, you know, school let out.
You're talking about the north-south?
Yeah, the road, if anything, move it further west where you're gonna have more density, so those people are coming out and being shuffled over to twenty-four? 'Cause right now, that whole development funnels right down. Everybody's gonna try to get out of that little bit of twenty-four, and they're gonna shoot right down by way of the high school.
Well, so let's, let's do this with those roads. I think...
Take them out.
Well, well, but there's also...
I mean, they're, these are roads for the future that would come in with a plan.
Right, but we've also consistently heard the story about Market Street. Like, I I've only been here a year and I have nightmares about it. We, I don't, I, we can't be short-sighted on that opportunity. What we can say is, we want an east-west connection here. We want a north-south connection here. Where they go, we are open to, and then, and some of that's gonna be reliant on M dot, 'cause they control twenty-four, and then the other parts can be relying on R C O C, 'cause they control the rest. So we, we will not have the end-all, be-all when it comes to that, but we can make it to where these are more or less references to an east-west and north-south connection.
Okay.
Where they go.
Sir?
I would like to...
Well, hey, and Don, you had some questions, didn't you?
Bob covered it.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
For the team.
I would suggest that we do this come across and come down, take that out. Because where does that go? That goes over here to North Oxford. Where do these people go? They come back down here to Ray Road, and they gotta come back here, or they go that way on Ray Road. And if you're trying to get people here, south and out, you've got North Oxford Road. When the construction was going on a few years ago, this was one of the main bypasses. Could be made that again.
I I, so I see that. I guess the only thing I would say about that is, and and not, I mean, work to your pleasure, is that everybody in that corner, right, if that ends, however dense that ends up being, in order to get I just, yeah, I just, but I hear people talking about Ray Road too, and 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 almost...
Well, this goes down to here, and you got Ray Road coming out here. So you got two roads coming out, but you're keeping all this traffic from wanting to go over here that actually doesn't go anyplace.
So we, east, east to west up until kind of this north-south?
Up until we cut it off there.
Alright, is Commissioner Noel?
I don't know all the terminology for the type of roads, but I would suggest that those be roads that didn't have driveways on them, that they were like a service drive possibly, that, not that people could go super fast, but you could go down through there and get through that subdivision and branch it off to where you need to go.
I I would for...
When you hit the subdivisions that have cars parked on the street, driveways coming into them, we've learned, we learned in Waterstone that there's some of those areas, it just doesn't work.
Yeah, and I, again, we're, we're getting a little too d- design-intensive. However, I would, I would think that that road would be some sort of a market-style road where there aren't, I can't speak to how many houses actually front market, but again, limited to that point, that's the kind of road we would, we would envision here. Is there a consensus on Mr. Turner's comment about the road being more of a loop-through than a cut-through?
Yeah.
How long did I get to all of your questions?
You covered it all, Bob. Thank you.
You could've stayed home and watched the game.
What's the score?
Uh, what's the score?
Two-two.
Two-two. It's two-two. They're open. Um alright, so east-west to the north-south. Um any other comments or, you know?
I I have a comment. I believe some of these conditions will all change when development comes at us.
Yep.
I mean, these are only, these are only proposals, but the density part is one thing, and I'm not looking at numbers tonight. I'm looking at maybe creating some buffering, which I like what Mr. Turner brought up. And I think it's important to keep the buffering as part of the value of what these other people are looking for for themselves. And they, they've spent a lot of money to live where they live, 'cause I love it up there. And I only drive through there once in a while to take a peek at it. But it's, it's a, it's property that's what, been well-protected in Oxford for a long time, and I think it should still be protected.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Sir?
I'm still on the numbers. Do we, is the commission satisfied with having this chart put out with the fifteen hundred number on?
That's a maximum number, correct?
Maximum number of dwelling units, fifteen hundred. That's gonna be the bench.
Can I ask another question real quick?
Well, let me, but let me inform that number first.
Okay.
So that, that number um is informed to some extent by the available water sewer infrastructure that is in the area.
For REUs?
For REUs, correct.
Alright.
And so there is fifteen hundred available REUs for this area, and that is part of infrastructure that the township is implementing up twenty-four. I just, your question, whatever it may be, I just wanna make sure that...
You're fine. I'm all about water and sewer.
Yeah.
So there's no way that we could look at this two years, five years down the road and say, hey, let's do multifamily all across, put three thousand homes in there. It's not possible.
I...
Because there's no water for it.
Possible is, I mean, with enough money, anything is possible. However, that the type of, the type of investment that would then need to come from the developer would probably be so much that, no, they wouldn't even pursue three thousand. They'd rather pursue the fifteen hundred and tablet's already there. Okay.
So just to recap for my simple mind, we've answered our own questions here tonight. Mr. Commissioner Turner was excellent with his buffers. We've, we've reduced the road on the east-west side, but we've also acknowledged that we're gonna have transportation infrastructure that is very dear to our master plan and has come out at our uh planning sessions for the master plan and the survey. So we've talked about our infrastructure for our driving. We've talked about their, their on-the-water sewer. So we have capabilities of having that development there when the day comes. And we also have that commercial service out on twenty-four, this commercial right here capable of of having retail that would support that development.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other thoughts or tweaks on this one before we move on to Dunlap?
No, I think you answered it, because my question was, how did you come up with that number in the first place? And you said because of REUs and what was proposed for water sewer capacities.
Yeah.
So that's how I came up with that number.
Okay.
Alright, there.
I just have one, one thing that, um, I'd like to mention about traffic study. I don't know if we can, I know that's usually done later, maybe closer to a preliminary design um being presented, but I'm wondering, because traffic is such a problem in our community, is there a way we can get in front of that? And I know can't, maybe we don't answer that now, but if we can somehow um may maybe make this a ongoing discussion as developments come up, that we're staying in front of it, because...
I mean, traffic will be, I mean, it's a noted item as far as traffic management is concerned for the sub-areas. They're like that, figuring out how traffic flows, where it goes, where it ends up. Site plans also, depending on the size of the development, that we require a traffic impact study at site plan review.
I'm talking more about the community and as a whole, right?
Oh, yeah.
I'm talking about M twenty-four, I'm talking about all the other... I'm talking about M-24, I'm talking about all the other arteries around, um, how traffic flows and...
Yeah.
So we're doing the right thing for the community five, ten, fifteen years down the road as these developments happen and we try to manage density and all these things.
Yep.
So I'm just, um, maybe we can look at that as a future agenda item to, uh...
Well, when you get the...
Figure out how we stay in front of that.
Yeah, when we, when we get the master plan draft in front of you, they'll have, there'll be a traffic and transportation section. And at that time, I would, I mean, you know, tear apart, redline it. What do we need to say more of? Yeah, what do we need to say less of?
Okay. I'm just thinking of some of the things I heard mentioned and I'd like to make sure the community knows that it's here tonight. And we do appreciate everybody coming out, right? It's a great showing tonight. I'm, I'm good with that plan for now.
Okay.
With Dunlap.
So the other site that was discussed, um, and again, we've, we've put back in front of you for this evening, is the Seymour Lake, kind of Granger Road, Dunlap area. The one thing I will note on this is that the, the boundaries of this area actually extend a little bit further west than what is portrayed. So we, we will fix this. But this site would actually come out to about this area and down. And...
Will you do that again, please?
Yep. So, it would just come out a little bit further west and then come down and then jut up and over. So we need to modify that. With that modification, um, even if with these designations coming west, you know, equally, we are still, we are still within this, the six-hundred, uh, dwelling unit max. So, once we make that correction to, to appropriately designate the area in question and using these same categorizations or, um, um, designations for residential units, we would still be at our six-hundred mark. So that's just a, a technical error that we need to correct. Again, we can discuss it further, but just for reference, I want to make sure the plan commission knew.
Can I ask an awkward question?
Sure.
So, so I wasn't really too present, I guess, when a lot of these dwelling unit numbers came up at one time. And I see where it's allotted based on sewer capacity. So it's based on a lot of it because of REUs and what we have availability for.
Correct.
But in, in my mind, when I look at the size of this property and I look at it by acreage, and with a lake on it and the water and the wetlands and the different things, I would say there's a percentile of property that could never be developed accordingly to make this even work to put six-hundred dwelling units there. So, I don't know. The number throws people off because they think it's gonna be like high-density. I don't feel like we can get that much density out of that property. I mean, personally, unless we start stacking stuff up in the air. And that's not how I want to see that land developed. I'd rather see it develop more with single-family development, except for the single-family attached units up on... I mean, if we had townhouses across from that power plant that's up there, that's what's on Granger Road now. That wouldn't bother me, because a lot of people don't want to live next to that anyway. So the only thing that's gonna fit up there is something with a more multiple-type situation. So that looks good to me there. Then when we went down with the detached, single-family homes, south of that, when you come down Dunlap Road, uh, that kind of fits to me. The people that talked a little earlier about, um, where their lake was and where they live and they talked about, uh, Oak Ridge over there, that, that's the lake that's way down there in the one section, kind of to the bottom left-hand corner of the...
Yeah.
Um, I don't feel like, we, we kept everything to the north side of that property as two-and-a-half acre residential lots. That's what we're proposing right now. And I don't feel that's that, uh, bad to put two-and-a-half acre parcels in there, because there's some people nearby that have two-and-a-half acre parcels presently, you know, when you go down Granger Road. So, uh, that all looked pretty good to me. I don't think we would affect those people in what they first talked about earlier. And I know Mr. Port was one of them. So Jim, uh, your lake, we, we still want to protect that avenue of what that is there, but we don't want high-density there. I understand.
I have more concern about funneling.
Oh, funneling.
If you have multiple properties along coax...
Where does it go?
And if you create a park or boating dock area or something where people have created access as part of one of those two-and-a-half acre parcels.
Oh, okay.
Now we have, instead of...
Sorry, four car rentals.
Yeah. That's all right.
Thanks for your comment, though.
Thanks.
I get it. I get it.
Any other?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, there was a, there was a question that came up or concern about the lower area, I believe.
Yeah.
About property lines. Can you talk to that?
Yeah, so, just for clarity, the note reads, preserve natural features and connect to green infrastructure on adjacent parcels.
That's very down here, right?
Yeah. So, that, the purpose of that note is really more or less to, to state that the natural features along, you know, along these areas are meant to be retained for buffers for properties bordering or outside of it. It really isn't, it isn't so much speaking to a use or, uh, speaking to a use or even a residential designation. It's more or less just outlining that along these areas, we definitely want to make sure that we're maintaining the natural area along that border and utilizing it as a buffer.
So we're not gonna have a developer clear-cut right up to somebody's property line that's already there?
I mean, the intent of that statement is to, is to make sure that they understand that when they bring their PUD to us.
Okay.
Can, can I show you my area of concern?
No, I think I know.
Yeah, because your, your, your little green line is property I am.
What's, is this, what's this zone for right now? This, this area? I'm, I'm following Commissioner Turner's ideas, but what's this zone?
I have, my apologies. If you give me a moment, I can pull up the map to answer that question.
The only reason I ask that is, is that we have...
He's going to try and figure it out.
I'm sorry?
He's gonna try and figure it out for you.
Okay. But, the idea is if we have two-and-a-half here, using some of the ideas Mr. Turner had across the street, is if we had some two-and-a-half here as, as a buffer, we have two-and-a-half down here if I, from what I just talked with Commissioner Berger, we ran two-and-a-half up a little bit. Can, can that happen?
I mean, it, it, yeah, from the perspective of you can put, you can put anything in this, I don't say anything, that's the wrong term. It's a general guide to kind of show the areas in which you, you're referencing.
Are we complicating things too much?
No, no. I think with this site, it's just, again, it's one of those things where the, the nitty-gritty comes out in the site plan. But if it's a general, if it's a general request of the planning commission, the subarea show that along this southern area...
And working with the model that we have on the other side of 24, just as an idea, could we have a road, a loop in here, just like we did across?
The, the challenge with road, with transportation infrastructure through this site is the wetlands and the topography. Kind of out the gate, we know, because this site is not active anymore. And this is what we have to work with.
Most likely, this will be developed before the other side.
Correct. The conversations around this area were on kind of a one-to-five-year timeframe.
And, so if we were smart enough, which we were, to talk about roads and loops and buffers and two-and-a-half acre, one acre, two-and-a-half acres going into residential, one acre going into resi, more dense residential, smaller lots, why can't we apply that same philosophy over here?
I mean, I, it's not that you can't, there's less geography to play with, there's also less numbers associated with the site. So I think it's something that we can, we can try to kind of carve out. And you're talking about along the south and along its eastern border, along Dunlap?
I'm listening to what was said tonight. And if we apply, apply some of those same concepts that we used across the street, 24, into here, I don't know how the other commissioners feel. I, I'm one vote. But if we did that through here, looped it some way, I don't know how, but gave that some thought, that we have our two-and-a-half possibly along the road. You've got some issues here, you've got some property issues up through here, but that would help. Up here, you're gonna put attached residential for, for that reason we talked at the last meeting. And then maybe through here, put, I don't know.
I mean, I guess, so the one thing I guess I would kind of say is that buffering along that side, not that it can't be put in, but right across the street is water still. So you, you have, you, you might have this density kind of sandwiched, low-density sandwiched between density, as opposed to...
Well, you've got it here. Two-and-a-half all the way up this way.
Right. Right. On the other side of it, though, is, is similar, as opposed to being sandwiched between the two. I just, the clarification that I'm making.
What, I'll just, I'll stop. But I'll just throw it out for the other commissioners. Do they have any feelings towards this and not?
What if you made that green, the green way, the, the main line there, everything below that, two-and-a-half? Make that kind of the dividing line, if you will. Is that a possibility?
Anything's possible. Again, it's just, the subarea plan is, I mean, I guess what that highlights is, again, just, uh, a de-escalation of density from north to south.
Um, Mr. Chair?
Sir?
Tom just asked me about the density. We're not playing numbers tonight, okay? We're, we're managing the property. We're managing the township's property here. And if we use buffers, we use two-and-a-half acres, the same concept that we used across the street on this one, I think it could be a win-win.
Mateo, uh, Mr. Chair? Chip? Okay, I, I'm listening to John and I'm trying to think a little ahead here. I mean, until a plan is really presented to us, we can always design buffering into a plan down the road. I mean, if someone comes in with a PUD and, and we want to talk back and forth on what we want to expect to see, we can create buffering during that PUD process.
Correct.
So I mean, we're only proposing right now for future use of this property, not looking totally at density. I'm not looking totally at density, I'm looking at what we can do to make sure that people that are in there, you know, that what are living residents now currently and how we can provide protection for that. So, and John's brought up a good point, but I think we can do that when we do a PUD or do it down the road when we do development.
I mean, if, if the...
Maybe I'm off.
No, no, no. I mean, if, if the simpler way to address it is to just, is to, the green buffer designation that we've kind of used, is throw that along Dunlap.
Okay.
Right? To state that, again, what, what density lies on the other side of the buffer is yet to be determined, but there will be a buffer.
Okay.
I mean, I think, does that kind of accommodate? So, I would say then, I'm, I would think that there's a, is a consensus amongst extending that green buffer, the full length of Dunlap and around the southern part of, portion of the site.
Yeah.
Yeah?
So you're gonna continue it across in the westerly direction, or east-west direction on the southern portion of the property? And then you're gonna take it along Dunlap Road?
I'm gonna take this green buffer.
Yeah.
I'm gonna put it all the way here and I'm able to connect into there.
Okay. That's decisive, that's, that's very definitive.
That's decisive.
So this will be redirected at us?
Yep, you get to see it, you get to see it again.
We'll get to see it again.
As it relates to this site, any other questions or comments? No? Okay. So, just to make sure, any other changes? We answered that question?
Mateo, I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, future paving? There was some discussion about that. The Sanders Road in the future from a last few meetings ago, is that something that's in the works and any other paving? Is that, a question that came up tonight, asking about what might be in the future?
Yeah, I believe the only, the only paving I'm aware of is Dunlap is to be paved from, uh, I'm sorry, yeah, Dunlap is to be paved from Market South down to basically where we are now. And then I believe Granger is to be paved a certain distance into, or, or west of Dunlap.
And that's, do you know what year that is?
Sanders is also supposed to be paved.
Is it? Okay.
Sanders is six, nineteen and Dunlap is, uh, sixteen.
Twenty-six and twenty-nine?
Twenty-sixteen.
Twenty, twenty-six?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is, is Sanders? I'm sorry, Dunlap?
No, Dunlap is in the...
Twenty-twenty-five?
Yeah, twenty-five, next year.
Sanders is twenty-twenty-six.
Sanders is twenty-twenty-six and you say twenty-nine on something?
No, I, I was wrong.
Okay.
Too many numbers tonight, sorry.
I just tried to address the question about paving that came up.
Sure.
Earlier.
Thank you. Okay. All right, well, I appreciate your time and your effort. Nothing easy about it, but thank you. I'll skip to the agenda here for a minute.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to number eleven, new business, which we have none. Number twelve, uh, communication committee report. Uh, anything from the economic development? I don't think they're here tonight. Okay. Uh, ordinance review?
Just, uh, excuse me, a brief update. Last night at the board meeting, two of the ordinance proposals that we had approved and sent to them was completed in its second reading and approved. So those will be either changes or new ordinances in place. There are two more that were also set up for their second reading from their first reading. The other thing is, again, we're starting, as we've talked about today in the meeting, of looking at what projects or items need to be in our plan for next year. So if any of you board members have something you would like us to add to that list, please get it to us, either to Mateo or myself, and we'll get it on our list. And that will be, I think we'll review it next month and then probably in the next month it will be here for everybody's reviewing by it.